Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Milton for October 20th, 2015. First order of business is approval of the minutes of meetings for September 29th and October 6th.
I'm moved that we approved the meeting minutes for September 29th and October 6th, 2015, as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item three on the agenda is confirmation of future meeting dates. The 26th and 27th, which is town meeting, and if necessary, the 27th, I guess. November 3rd, November 17th, and November 24th. The only thing, the only question I might have is November 24th. I am traveling the week of Thanksgiving.
It's November 24th?
Yeah. So, I could do it on the Monday if somebody wants to meet on Monday instead of...
So, the November 23rd?
I'm leaving Tuesday, yeah, I'm leaving Tuesday morning.
So, November 23rd?
Is that good with the board?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think so, yeah.
It's fine.
Because we do have liquor license renewals that have to get done that last week of November, so we do have to have a meeting that week.
Okay. Yeah, the Monday.
So, the 23rd, okay.
Do that.
We have a notice posted for Thursday evening?
Yeah, I believe we do. Okay. Item four on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, before I start Citizen Speak, I just want to, and we will get to it very shortly, but I just wanted to say something about Citizen Speak, because from time to time we receive correspondence from residents that are upset about the amount of time they're given to address the board, sometimes about allowing non-residents to address the board. And I just want to make it clear that the Board of Selectmen's meetings are open public meetings, and under mass general law, anybody from the public, resident and non, is entitled to attend the meeting. So, according from the regulations that the Attorney General has, and the open meeting law guide, that while the public is permitted to attend an open meeting, an individual may not address the board without permission from the chair. An individual may not disrupt a meeting of a public body or request the chair, or request of the chair, all members of the public should, at the request of the chair, all members of the public shall be silent. After a clear warning, a person who continues to be disruptive, the chair may ought to leave. So, that's what the Attorney General says about it. So, the public is entitled to attend all public meetings, obviously, but the public has no entitlement to speak or address the meeting unless the chair so says. There is no state law or local bylaw that entitles the public to address a public body. Similarly, there is no law or local bylaw that would exclude a non-resident from attending a public meeting or addressing, at the chair's consent, addressing the public body. That being said, the board, like all boards that have come before us, does and always will welcome and encourage all public attendees at our meetings to address the board with their concerns and comments, provided those comments are not racist or hurtful in any way or directed at specific individuals, whether those individuals are in attendance or not. The primary purpose of a public meeting is to conduct the business of the public body. The structure and comportment of our meetings must always be framed in the interest of completing the business before the public body. So, for that reason, we do reserve the right to limit the amount of public speak, especially in meetings when we have a large number of items on our agenda. So, I just want to say that. It's not, it's not trying to cut you off, it's just that at times we have a lot of business, and the prime purpose of our meetings is to do that business. So, that being said, I will open up to Citizen Speak if anybody would like to address the board. Phil?
Hi. I'm Phil Joe, heading 23 Parkwood Drive. I think all the Board of Selectmen are aware of the issue that I faced when I returned home on Tuesday from work, and this is really, there were two very large piles of dirt blocking one full lane of my street from being able to pass by. And I checked the town bylaws, and perhaps I don't, I didn't get the right one, but what I found was, under police regulations, "No person shall obstruct any portion of any way which the town is obliged to keep in repair without permit in writing of the selectmen, nor having obtained such permit, shall fail to comply with the conditions thereof. And in addition to any penalty to which he may be subjected under these laws for a failure, he shall reimburse the town for all expenses and damages which the town may be compelled to pay by reason of unauthorized use or any failure to comply with said conditions." And, you know, I wrote a note and to Joe Lynch, and Joe responded to me saying, "I dispatched our town engineer to the site first thing this morning. We both had assumed that Riley Brothers Construction, working on behalf of National Grid, was the reason behind the piles. They were on the process of doing roadway and shoulder restorations. However, upon arrival, we learned that the issue was stay or nursery landscaping, performing prior, private work at 22 Parkwood. Mr. Thompson ordered them to immediately remove all material from the street and to clean the street of all debris and residue before the close of business today. We will also follow up with the owner slash builder to have them obtain an after-the-fact street occupancy permit." Joe? Now, I wanted to hand out another picture, which shows, which shows the drain on my street, so you can imagine where the dirt goes when you wash down the street. Goes right in the town storm drain. And I mentioned this to Joe, and I asked that he inspect the storm drain to make sure that there was no obstruction in the storm drain. He ignored that note. I went back to Joe, and I said, "I am requesting a copy of the permit that you referred to below. It would be great if you could scan it and email it to me." He wrote back and said, "A permit application has not been submitted. Parties using a public street, such as the way this one was used, without any permit is a very common occurrence over most of the year. In the overall priority of ongoing activities in my department, this is an extremely low one. Chasing down a permit application for something that has been completed without incident would be nothing but punitive and does not warrant any further effort from my very busy staff." I guess I'd have to say I'm appalled by that type of response, and I think that Joe should be disciplined. Why? Because we have a clear bylaw that says that the selectmen must issue a permit. My assumption is that the Board of Selectmen has delegated that responsibility to Joe. Joe initially wrote to me and said that he was going to make sure that he issued an after-the-fact street occupancy permit, and then he comes back and says, "I'm too busy to do it." Now, if he had initially said that he had no intention of doing it, I guess I would still have an issue, but I'd understand. But he said in his email that he was going to do it. I requested a copy, and he says, "Well, I'm way too busy to do that." I think it's clear that these two eight-foot-tall piles of dirt, six to eight feet tall, were an obstruction of the road. And one of the things I also noticed in the bylaw was that it's required to be adequately marked. This dirt was left in the street overnight, and in my opinion, it's not adequately marked. There are a bunch of orange cones around piles of dirt that block an entire travel lane of the road. I think a flashing beacon of some type would have been superior. I can only imagine what would happen if somebody ran into that pile, their airbags deployed, they were injured. I wonder, did the person who put the dirt there, or is the responsible party, did they have adequate insurance to protect the town in the event of injury? And who went to make sure that that was a fact? I think the bylaws are excellently written to protect the town against these kinds of things. They're very complete, and the idea that whoever left this, these huge mounds of dirt in the middle of a travel lane of a road would be required to have insurance is a good thing. I would urge the town to enforce the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Citizen Speak? Seeing none. Next, we'll have a conference with Michael Sullivan on the Flag Retirement Project. Michael, want to come up? Hi, Michael.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael, you're at Milton High.
Yeah, junior.
Junior? Good.
My name is Michael Sullivan, and I am a junior at Milton High. And I am also a volunteer tour guide at Ford Independence on Castle Island in South Boston. As some of you may know, I am leading a flag retirement project. I have set up bins in every Milton public school and hopefully the town hall to collect unserviceable flags. My goal is to bring awareness to my generation on how to properly dispose of a flag. The American flag for me stands for more than just an object. It symbolizes over 200 years of history, and it is what brings us together as a nation today. Men and women have sacrificed on our lands and overseas for the meaning of this flag. I participated in last June's Flag Day retirement ceremony at Ford Independence. The next one is on Veterans Day at 10:00 a.m., and that is why I am collecting flags across town. Obviously, we are very, we are a very patriotic town, and you don't have to travel far to see an American flag in Milton. I am happy to do this project because it combines our appreciation for our veterans with a chance to properly dispose of a flag that's been flown proudly. Bins will be available through November 9th, or if anyone has a problem with dropping off a flag or questions about this project, they can email me at miltonflagretirement@gmail.com. Thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Gormly, the principals of Milton Public Schools, and Mrs. Fagan, our town administrator.
Great.
That's a great project, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
So, where again on those, those bins going to be? There's going to be...
In the front lobby of each school.
Each school, okay.
The main lobby here, too.
What's great about it is my sons are at Glover School, and they came home talking about it. So, their teachers have educated them about it, so I think it's great that they're learning a little bit about our flag and how important it is to our country. So, I commend you for this. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Michael spoke at Celebrate Milton, too, and was greeting a lot of people there at one of the tables with Ed Villard and talking about the project.
And I'm also a son of the American Legion as well.
Oh, that's great.
Well, great. Congratulations.
Why don't you say that email address once more, just so the cameras pick it up?
MiltonFlagRetirement@gmail.com.
MiltonFlagRetirement@gmail.com, so anyone can contact Michael there. That's great news, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven on the agenda is a conference with Peter Epstein on the RCN contract. Hi, Peter.
How are you?
Very good.
Peter?
Good evening.
Hi. So, if you'd just like to briefly go over the contract with us?
Sure. As you know, Milton has two cable companies serving it, RCN Telcom and Comcast Communications. And for several months, we have been negotiating the terms and conditions in a new RCN license. The original RCN license was granted back in 2000, and after a hiatus, the town amended the license. So, in fact, it was originally a 10-year license. The town granted RCN another five years, and so that license is expiring, I think, on November 1st. We have negotiated and prepared a new 10-year renewal license for RCN. 10 years is the maximum term allowed by Massachusetts law. I think you should have three copies before you. And to summarize, it's a 10-year license. The funding is 5% of RCN's gross annual revenues, and that can be used to fund, excuse me, your access group or other cable-related purposes. There is separate funding for equipment, and that comprises of a total of $50,000, which is payable at $5,000 a year, and an additional half a percent of gross. Again, that's for cable purposes, excuse me, or your access group. RCN did agree to provide, in addition to the three standard definition channels, which is what is being shown to your residents right now, one additional high-definition channel, and that will be made available in short time. In addition, RCN provided the equipment to make that work. There is equipment that the access group has to have, that RCN has to provide, and I would say that that's unusual. I can tell you that in all the negotiations that I'm involved with, and this is what I do, I negotiate cable contracts, with another leading cable company, whose name we won't mention, that company will not provide high-definition bandwidth for local access use. And I think that folks who have RCN are going to find, thank you, Anne Marie, are going to find really a difference in the quality of the picture they get, and not only in the video that you get. When you have people who come and do PowerPoint presentations, my understanding is, it is going to be much easier for the RCN subscribers to really see and understand what those PowerPoint presentations are. So, I think RCN is really to be commended. Tom Steele is here. Tom is a vice president of RCN. He made the negotiations very easy, and incidentally, you may know that federal law requires us to start the renewal process three years before expiration. So, just about right now is the three-year mark for Comcast. So, you'll finish this. You don't have to do anything right away, but you will undoubtedly get a letter from Comcast asking for renewal, and at some point, the town can sit down with Comcast as well. But I think it's a, it's a good contract. I have to say, I think it's a generous contract coming from RCN, which, as you probably know, has fewer subscribers than Comcast, but has really stepped up to the plate. And I think providing that high-definition channel should really be an improvement for a lot of your RCN subscribers out there. It'll be a crisper signal, so I'm looking at it now. I'm assuming I would look, I would, I don't know...
Ten years younger.
If I look 10 years younger, then, that's great. I don't think I'm going to look 10 years younger, but that's okay. That's all right. So, we did have, I did ask Barbara if she would make three complete copies. We've gone through a number of revisions, including, we made a couple today. We added, I think it was the East Milton Library Branch, and we put that in Exhibit Two. We had added some origination locations to Exhibit Four, which we had agreed to back in the 2007 amendment. So, I think that it's a good franchise. I think that, you know, in the communities where we have competition, especially where it's Comcast and RCN, you know, we're really appreciative of the fact that people have a choice. They have a choice. That's important. They have a choice. So, I would encourage you to consider this and sign it if you're so inclined.
Peter, the only question I had was, I know there were some benchmarks in the original contract that RCN had trouble meeting with the...
As far as their build-out?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how would those handle in the new contract?
In the, in the, I don't know if it was the, it may have been the amendment, the town did agree to a standard, in fact, that allowed RCN to say, "We will serve everybody if they are a certain distance away," and it's not going to cost more than, I think the number we used was $1,000 a house. That was in the amendment, and we simply put it in this license as well. And it is in a number of other municipal franchises, because at some point, RCN had some difficulties and did ask communities for some relief on that. Now, exactly where RCN is in the town and how many subscribers, I'm not exactly sure. I believe they have just under 800 subscribers, and I believe Comcast has probably about 7,200 subscribers. So, people can get RCN, but there is a benchmark to get that, and that was just something we had done quite a few years ago. Actually, it was probably, what, eight years ago when we did that amendment?
Peter, just following up on that, that was the area that I had a question about as well. Do you have any sense, from, you're representing other towns on this, what the potential cost could be? It says that if, if RCN can connect a home for a cost of under $1,000, $1,000, then they'll make the connection within 30 days. If it's over $1,000, then the customer would have to pay the difference, and then there's a 30-day period.
Would have to pay the balance, right, right.
Do you have a sense, obviously, depending on what part of town, what, there are unique circumstances that may make that hard to answer in every case, but do you have a sense of what we could potentially be talking about in terms of cost? And I ask that because there are a lot of people in town who have asked about RCN and...
About RCN.
Whether they're, why it's not in their particular neighborhood.
Right. Well, Mr. Steele is here, and if you're so inclined, I would ask Tom, because he is much more familiar with, you know, each town, and to the degree to which people are calling and asking, "Can we get the service?"
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
For the record, my name is Thomas K. Steele, Jr. I'm vice president and regulatory counsel for RCN. It's a pleasure to be here again. And I will say, I enjoyed working with Anne Marie, and particularly Ann Barbara Martin and Michael Blanchett, it was wonderful process, was very enjoyable, you know, which I can't say about all towns. The, we've done about two-thirds of the town, and I'm going to, I knew this better when we were talking, but I think it's the south that's less densely populated. I want to say the southern part of the town. So, when you get spread out, it costs more each, and particularly if there's underground construction, is expensive. We are always looking to grow within our footprint. One of the inhibitors for us is that we just haven't had success in marketing here in Milton as we'd like. You know, contrast, 707,000 is, it's not like that anywhere else. So, we have to step it up. We're going to step it up with better marketing, I hope, and we hope to look at several, there are several nodes that are borderline, and if we can improve our marketing, get our subscribers, get more subscribers, and build a better base, then I think we, there's several nodes that I think we can do during the course of this license. And you're right to call us on it, say, you know, what have you got? We can, I can show you some of the...
I'm just curious, would you say, from much of the town, if the cost is over 1,000, are we talking hundreds or thousands of dollars that someone might need to pay in order to get the connect? Hundreds, okay.
And to Peter's point, we haven't been getting a lot of calls where people are asking us to come out and survey their properties and do that kind of thing. We have, there hasn't been a human cry for that. So, we'd have to almost create our own enthusiasm, if you will. But if you hear, excuse me, Peter, but if you hear or if you have a question, you know, call me and, you know, Anne Marie, call me, and we'll check out the address and see what we can do. And if we get enough interest, and we can expand, even if we're pushing up against that threshold, but we can gain subs, we'll do that.
Just to give you a plug, is RCN price competitive compared to Comcast, or...
Very, very price competitive, and we have a TiVo product that people like, that practically runs the TV for you. We're doing everything with the streaming and all the other things, and our speeds are very good. And because we have fewer subscribers, the speeds tend to stay very high on the internet access side. So, that's a plus. And people come home and they, you know, they're on some other systems, it slows down, but ours is consistent.
Just about a year ago, we had the ascertainment hearing, and I remember we had one woman who came in, you were here that night, Tom.
Yes, you were.
One woman came in and spoke, and she spoke in favor of the cost and the quality of the service, but we had a comment period. After that, we, Anne Marie confirmed for me to say we didn't receive any written comments after that, so...
No, we didn't. I suppose the other problem with Comcast, too, is that so many people now are bundled with the telephone and everything else, and that becomes an issue, I'm sure, with...
Yeah, we offer all three products, too, but yeah, I'm not sure what it is, to be honest, I'm not sure what it is here. Maybe we had a false start in the beginning, and we stumbled, and then we picked up again with that amendment, and then we, so maybe it's just hard to overcome that first impression.
Okay, well, for anybody listening out there, check out RCN.
Still good to have choices.
The other thing is...
See you in HD, you know.
The license, the license contemplates annual performance evaluations, and I don't know whether the Comcast one does or not, but that's something that the board hasn't done, and I think we should go, live in the direction of having those, especially as we transition to the stronger town administrator form of government, where the town administrator's picking up some of the things that would normally be on our agenda. This is probably something that should now be coming onto the board's agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, you will find that both licenses are very similar. They've got almost the exact same boilerplate provisions. The funding is a little different in Comcast. So, I think when you do ascertainment for Comcast, that you, I would hope, would look at RCN and make sure that, you know, it is a comparable and fair deal...
Right.
...for both Comcast and RCN. And you've got, you've got, you certainly got a lot of time. I did get something from Barbara the afternoon. The DTC, or the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, had written to the town, simply advising them of the impending Comcast expiration, even though it's three years away. When I first saw it, I thought, "Oh, no, she got that wrong. We're not doing Comcast." And then I read it, and I realized, "Oh, oh, you got the letter from the DTC." So, you know, a lot can happen in three years. This is an industry that's changing a lot. I don't have to tell you, and Tom could tell you even better, so it should be an interesting period, and it may be challenging, you know, when you actually come to sit down with Comcast. But the ascertainment is important. It's all important. So, I'm sure you'll do a good job, and that's down the road, though. That's down the road.
And one last point, I mentioned how data and internet access is important, and one concession that Anne Marie did get out of RCN, or two, actually, we're doing a high-speed modem product for a building that you would designate in the town, and we're also doing a modem to improve redundancy at the peer school to give you a backup if something should happen to the existing system.
That's great.
So, we're taking steps to do that as well. It's not my grandfather's cable.
I should have mentioned that, and that, again, is something that, and I'm not, I'm not favoring RCN, but, you know, RCN agreed to the high-definition channel in the contract. As Tom said, they agreed to the provision of internet in the contract, and they agreed to a senior discount in the contract. And I can tell you, and I'll just say it, those are three things that Comcast generally will not do. So, I think that, you know, RCN is really to be commended for stepping up and providing that. You know, it's a valuable service, and RCN did it, so...
That's great. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve and sign a 10-year cable television renewal license with RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC. It shall commence on November 1st, 2015, and terminate on October 31st, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a thank you to our negotiating team of Anne Marie, Michael, and Barbara, and our very esteemed counsel, Peter Epstein.
I was going to mention that while you were signing the contracts. I really want to thank Peter Epstein, I want to thank Barbara Martin and Michael Blanchett as well for being, helping with the negotiations.
They did a good job.
And Mr. Steele, you're superb to work with.
I'm softy. Thank you.
Yeah, so, if you would sign that now, the plan was for Tom to take it back, and Tom... will get these signed by RCN and return one original to the town and one original to me, so I will have an original as well.
Yes.
So motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Peter. Sign one more.
Which one's I'll sign? Just check this out.
Okay. Straight goes.
This one. That's one set. Thank you.
All these minds work.
You might want to please for a better budget for makeup.
I'll remember that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Item eight on the agenda is a conference with Council on Aging Director Marian Sullivan, quarterly report and presentation over FY17 budget. Hi, Marian.
Good evening.
What up?
Mike, hi, Marian.
We picked the right night to come, senior discount.
I know, that's right. Rush right out. I'm a senior.
I know, but we haven't had it for a while, so good for them.
So, I'm Michael Val, for those who don't know, I'm of Lantern Lane, and I am the chair of the council on aging, and I've come here to add a few comments to what Marian's gonna say, and as moral, maybe, support.
Well, first of all, good evening. This is the first time in 22 years I have been asked to give a quarterly report, so I think it's a great idea, makes me feel important in what we do, so thank you. As many of you know, so many seniors watch the Board of Selectmen meeting. I wish you could be a fly on the wall to hear the comments on Wednesday morning from the bridge group as they have their coffee. Some people say, oh, nobody watches it. Trust me, they watch it.
I'm not sure we want to be a fly on that phone.
No, it's usually good comments.
Oh, that's good.
That's great.
So the good news is, the Council on Aging is alive and well in providing great services, programs, and classes to the ever-growing senior population in the town. Our focus remains on healthy aging, no matter how old you are. Our youngest senior is 60, our oldest is 104, still lives on her own. As I've said to you many times before, we're not your typical senior center. We don't do bingo, we don't do Foxwood, we concentrate on health and wellness and engagement in life at any age. Our top priority remains keeping seniors independent and active members of the community. They want to feel they can give something back to the town, and I think your senior tax work-off program that's just winding down at its 15th year is proof positive of what a good job they do and how important they feel about it. The big news is, the full-time van driver has started. It has been incredible. What a change it's made. We had a gentleman call, and he needed to go to Attleboro. Now, to me, that's like the other side of the world, and he said, is there any chance I could get there? I need to get, it's a cement shot that you get in your spine that can take away back pain. The only place that he could get it done. I looked at Joe Murrin, who's our full-time van driver, and I said, Attleboro, what do you think? He said, as long as we can do it between, you know, 8:00 and 5:00 at night, we can get it done. We got this resident down there, and I just can't tell you, he sent the most beautiful thank-you note saying, thank you. And that's the flexibility we have now with a full-time van driver. You know, we have somebody who's there, if we have an emergency, I need to get up to Milton Hospital, you know, in 99% of the cases, we can help, and it has just made such a tremendous difference. Even in his downtime, he can take somebody to pick up a prescription to go to a bank. Just, it just, the possibilities are endless, and I'm happy to report that in the month of September, the rides were up 121, which is great, and the largest increase was Fuller Village. So, that was interesting. As you might know, the Friends of the Council on Aging, our fundraising arm sponsored a Free Shred Day for the town of Milton. We had 500 cars, non-stop, on Saturday morning coming through, all of them saying the same thing. This is really free, and it was. And the way the Friends approached this, again, for the second year, was they're just grateful that the town was able to fund a full-time van driver, and being the fact that a lot of them are of the older generation, they just felt it was important to say thank you. And as the residents came through, they said, why are they doing this? And I said, truly, just to say thank you. And they're like, wow, somebody's actually taking the time to do something and say thank you, even though, you know, it wasn't a million-dollar item. You know, the Friends really appreciated it. And then, two weeks ago, on Sunday, we had Run Milton, a second annual race, half marathon. 250 runners, another fabulous, fabulous event. Kudos to Maureen Conlin and her incredible team. We don't have the final number yet, but all of that will go to the Senior Van Transportation Fund, so a great effort. Since this is my first time, I'm just gonna, you know, tell me what you want to hear for the next time, and I'll be a little better prepared. But our upcoming events, I was so glad to see that young student talking about Veterans Day, because on November 3rd, at 11:30, we're gonna have 12th Annual Veterans Appreciation Luncheon. And what we do is, we extend an invitation to any senior veteran in the town to come and enjoy a soup-to-nuts turkey dinner provided by our friends Pat and Brendan Newell of Pat's Pizza. Donnie Lopez supplies flowers, the Fruit Center supplies rolls and cider. We have Carrie College, my good friend Ken Quigley, who copies, we have students, and we work closely with the students in the local public schools, and for the past year, we've been working with the special needs students at Pierce, and their teacher, Mrs. Mack, is just incredible. We were talking about the veterans program, and she said, do you think our students could do it this year instead of, you know, Tucker? And we said, yes. And these 14 students, they did the most incredible artwork, and just wrote letters, thank you to the veterans. So I bring them up to Carrie, Ken Quigley copies, and we give everyone who comes a packet, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. So just a plug, if there's anybody we missed, November 3rd, Tuesday, 11:30, free, if you bring a spouse with you, we'll provide van transportation. So it's just our way of saying thank you. And the sad thing is, you know, you see so many of the veterans, you know, I think of Joe Manning and Al Thomas, who have been with me for the last 12 years, who won't be there this year. So just our way, again, of saying thank you for all they've done. Then on Thursday, November 19th, at 10:00 a.m., we're gonna have with us Dr. Robert Stern, who's gonna do a presentation on Alzheimer's awareness. November is Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Dr. Stern is the top in his field. Nancy Stewart, our outreach coordinator, moved heaven and earth to get him. He's so tough, he's on all the Good Morning talk shows in the morning, but he's gonna be with us starting at 10:00 o'clock, so I just want to put that out there. It helps not only people, you know, who have the disease, but people who are caring for them. And when you walk away from his presentation, you walk away and you have hope. You know, there's so many advances, and he takes great pride in saying he's 62, and he knows in his lifetime he's gonna see a cure. So it's a wonderful program, and I'd encourage everybody to come. We're proud of the services we provide our residents. We can't fix every problem, but I can assure all of you that we give 100% plus to, you know, do the best we can. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or anything you'd like to see in a future report. I'm not a numbers person, so, as you can tell, I tell the story.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that would be one question in terms of, obviously, there are more seniors now than ever in the town of Milton, and the number of seniors that avail themselves to the senior center, is that growing?
It is. Last year, it was 2,071 residents who participated in either a program or availed themselves of a service, such as, you know, even if it's something as simple as like a blood pressure clinic to have your blood pressure checked, but most of it is transportation. You know, the numbers for transportation, which is, it's just huge, it's off the chart. So we, you know, we deal with the two different segments. We deal with the boomers who say, I want to see exercise programs on a Saturday, I want to see financial, you know, programs early evening, and then we have, you know, the nine-year-old who says, I just need a ride to the doctor's or to the Stop &amp; Shop, and, you know, it's a challenge, it is, but...
Marian, what do you, you know, for measurements to actually count the residents that come through, what type of format do you use for that?
It should be computerized, I know.
Okay, well, that's just a question, because I know that, as Tom mentioned, that seniors, the census says that will probably be around 6,500 seniors, and they're at Fuller Village, and they're at, also at Pine Tree Brook, and they're at Mica Valley. So in terms of programming, separate from actually measuring, what type of outreach do you do to those specific venues to kind of get them engaged into utilizing the senior center? Because the senior center should be a fabulous place for...
So what we do is twofold. The way we track them, David, is we do it paper check-in. Some senior centers, such as Quincy, they have elaborate cards you can scan, similar to if you go into like, you know, college or, you know, lunches at a school. We don't have that, it's like $10,000 to put it in. So we literally, if you sign up, you check in, the dates, we tally that every single month. As far as doing outreach, our newsletter is huge. It's nice to see that a lot more seniors are looking at our website as well. I'm very grateful to Rob Mallett for the help he's provided in getting that up and running. Not my area of expertise, but Rob had us on Facebook, the town website, so a lot of good information, and a lot of people see it that way. I just think word of mouth is very helpful, you know, in senior communities, you know, people say, I went to the Council on Aging, and I did cheer yoga, and I didn't know you could do that. So somebody telling somebody. Our hottest group still is men, very difficult. We just did a men's trip, we went to the Laus Anderson Museum, we took them to lunch at Doyle's, you know, they paid for it, we didn't take them. But, you know, we had a great group of men, and so little by little, you make progress that way, but it's just, it's just everybody working together and trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together. It's very hard to navigate some of the systems as you get older, and it's just like, you know, working with, you know, Fuller, MRE, Home Inc., you know, I was up at Home Inc. the other day when we, talking about, you know, the extra van service we have now because of the full-time van driver, and, you know, Jim Walker spread the word in his community. So I think it's getting it out that way that's extremely helpful.
Plus, we do have a tremendous number of seniors that are not in those facilities, but just living in place right now.
Right, right.
It's just continuing, continuing to grow.
Right.
And that probably is even more difficult for outreach, because they're not in one location.
It is. We do get a lot of calls from adult children who say, you know, my mom or my dad, you know, especially if one's spouses pass, you know, I see them sitting alone all the time, what can you do? And it's hard to do, and it's hard to hear from adult children. So oftentimes Nancy Stewart or Alice Mercer will make a phone call and say, you know, hi, we're just calling to say, you know, hello, is there anything we can do to offer some help? And usually, it's like, no, I'm all set, but then if you repeat that maybe in another month, then it's like, geez, somebody actually cares. So, you know, just keep trying and plugging away and, you know, doing the best you can.
Well, I want to commend you for doing such a great job, but I also want to just suggest that, and potentially maybe a survey to all the seniors in the different seniors group and across town, maybe create it at some point.
We created it, we're gonna send it up.
That's great, because I think that it's good to get feedback from people, and I think that, you know, we're in an ever-changing market with a senior population that's living longer and longer, and their needs become greater, you know, and, which is great, that they're living longer and feeling younger and...
And so as an incentive to get the survey back, as we've done this periodically, and, you know, sometimes people will send them back. Number one is gonna be a self-addressed stamped envelope, which is important, and then we're gonna, whoever sends it back, we're gonna enter them in a drawing for a gift certificate to steal and write, so a little incentive to send it back.
I might take that. You're not there yet.
I don't know.
I'm 65.
Yeah. No, it's 60, it's 60.
Sexy, I know, I'm a senior in denial, so it's...
It's the new 50.
And that's the other thing, that people will walk in and they'll say, you know, I live in the town, and sometimes they'll actually go to take out a license, and I say, you know what, I don't, you know, I don't have to see your license if you're over the age of 60, and they could be 80, and I'll say, but you don't look that to me. You're eligible for the services, you're a member, you know, we're a department of the town, so. It's tough to step through the door, you know, nobody wants to say, I'm going to the senior center. We just had the car doctor there from, he does, he writes in The Globe, and he's also with AARP, I can't think of his name, and that was incredible. And my husband just retired, and he said, are you having the car doctor? And I said, yeah. And he said, I think I might come up. And I went, you might come up? And he said, yeah. He said, I just wish like it didn't say senior. And he came, and he said, wow, I was surprised what a great program it was. So it's like, you know, you break away of that stereotype, you know, and I think when people come, they feel comfortable, we try and make them feel welcome, you know, the Friends just set up a Keurig coffee machine, you can come in and have coffee, read a newspaper, you know, have a Lorna Doon cookie, and, you know, it's just, it's not as intimidating as some people think it is. So just getting them through the door, and then once you get them, we can usually keep them.
And plus, all the activities you have up there, like the boot camp, Maureen runs, and the movies...
Yoga, Tai Chi, Zumba Gold, that's great. I think you saw that, David, did you when you were up?
Yep, I have seen it.
And, you know, so just a lot of, and everything for health and wellness, you know, not, you know, as I said, not bingo, not Foxwood, and, you know, the best we can do.
That's great. And doing it all on a relatively small budget, too.
We couldn't do it without fundraising, you know, so it's a huge part of what we do.
That being said, that's a good segue into budget, but...
Good segue into budget.
So I notice your budget is, for the most part, is similar to last time, except on your non-contingent budget, you had a full-time outreach coordinator. So right now, that coordinator is half her time is funded by grant and...
She's 10 hours funded by the town and 27.5 hours from our formula grant. And what that is, is that's a state grant that is based on the number of elders, and they're still using the 2010 census, and it's like five-something per elder, and this, for FY16, it's gonna be roughly $42,000. So that $42,000 pays 27.5 hours of the outreach coordinator, and then what we have left is the balance for our outreach worker.
So my question, then, is if your outreach worker becomes full-time town, what is gonna happen with that grant?
Glad you asked that, Tom. So as you just said, and you gave me the perfect segue, we do a lot of fundraising. Part-time van drivers, we have one part-time van driver funded by the town, we have four others that are funded, you know, thanks to the generosity, $25,000 with the Copeland Family Foundation, and then through the Friends of the Council on Aging. So what that would do would free up roughly $42,000, no, wait, I'm sorry, let me go back. So if we were to take the outreach coordinator's position and add it, it would roughly be $42,000. So what that would do was, would free up, you know, a portion of that grant money, so we could use it to fund the van driver salaries and maybe do a little less fundraising. I mean, we could hire more van drivers, you could have that van on the road seven days a week, you really could. Some towns do now, they're providing it, you know, on a Saturday or a Sunday to do things. So we could certainly, you know, provide that service. But I think the, if I can just say, the real reason I think it's important that we get this on the classification plan, is our current outreach coordinator is in a very unique situation. I know Anne Marie and Tom were involved when we had the discussion about her health insurance and benefits. The, I don't know what you'd call it, I don't want to say the deal, but the person who's currently in the position, if she was to leave or to apply for another position, the benefits stop. The benefits are only for the person in the position now, Nancy Stewart. So if, in fact, she left or she applied for another position...
But she's only a 10-hour...
Right. So in order to get somebody else in to fill that position, and a much, much-needed position, I've done a lot of research on this, you're not gonna find anybody who would take a full-time job without benefits in this day and age. It's a critical, critical position. As I said in the narrative, when, you know, we first started, outreach was, yep, we're the Council on Aging, here's our newsletter, you can't believe what we're seeing now. You need expertise, you need to be up to date on what services are available, we work with police via, you know, the Board of Health, the Building Commission, you know, all sorts of different groups, you know, hoarding issues, you need to be up to date on them. You know, you need to know the demographics of the population you're serving, how do you outreach to people, you know, who maybe aren't your typical Milton senior? How do you do that? How do you break that barrier? I don't want to get carried away, because I tell too many stories, but just one, two weeks ago, Nancy Stewart was in, and we were trying to get together. I was working on budget stuff, she was trying to do a newsletter. A woman came in the door and came up to the window, and Tricia said, you know, hi, how can I help you? You know, introduced herself. The woman broke into tears, she said, I'm 67 years old, a young senior, she said, I've lived in the town of Milton for 27 years, my two children went through the school system. She said, I've... up to date on them. You know, you need to know the demographics of the population you're serving, how do you outreach to people, you know, who maybe aren't your typical Milton senior? How do you do that? How do you break that barrier? I don't want to get carried away because I tell too many stories, but just one. Two weeks ago Nancy Stewart was in and we were trying to get together. I was working on budget stuff, she was trying to do a newsletter. A woman came in the door and came up to the window and Tricia said, you know, "Hi, how can I help you?" You know, introduced herself. The woman broke into tears. She said, "I'm sixty-seven years old, a young senior." She said, "I've lived in the town of Milton for twenty-seven years. My two children went through the school system." She said, "I've had some health issues, I haven't been able to work." And she said, "I'm one month away from being homeless." And she broke into tears and she said, "I can't find anybody to help me." Nancy stopped what she was doing, brought the woman into a private office. An hour and a half later she came out. I went over to her and I introduced myself and I said, you know, "Were you able to get some help?" And she said, "I was." She said, "That person was so kind. I didn't know we had things in Milton such as the Milton Housing Authority. I didn't know how to access services like that." And that's what outreach does. It can't fix everything, but what it does is it helps you put the pieces together. And she said, "No one else would listen to me." And she said, "I can't tell you how grateful I am." We followed up on it. The woman is now on a couple of lists, you know, she's, we hooked her up with South Shore Elder Services, with, you know, Greater Boston Legal Services for free legal help. And that's why it's so important. I, you know, one of the, another one of the reasons is the schools recently hired a similar position, a full-time, I don't think they call it, you know, outreach, but it's to help children to go into the homes if there's, you know, situations, you know, that they need a little more care. And I think if we're doing that for our students, as a town, we owe it to our elders to have that service available for them. All they want is to remain in Milton, they love this town, they have supported it so much, but without the right people and the right services in place, it's going to be difficult because it's not going to get any easier, it's going to get more and more difficult to, you know, to help these people because the problem's just getting more and more complex. You know, social security, no increase this year. People say, I hear ladies say, "Well, that's because the cost of gas has gone down." Trust me, these seniors aren't driving the cost of, you know, gas for their cars and, but to be on a fixed income and to try and pay taxes and water bills and, you know, prescriptions, it's tough. So if somebody can help and say, "Here, let's look at your prescription plan and let's see if we can save you a little money for the same thing," what a wonderful service the town's providing them.
But just out of curiosity, if we go to funding a full-time outreach worker, why don't you use the grant money to, I suspect that this, your outreach worker is out straight right now anyways, there's probably need for additional outreach.
We could use extra hours, absolutely.
To use it for a part-time...
Right. You could hire a part-time. You know, there might be somebody who's looking for just mothers' hours who has the, you know, the background that would fit in, that doesn't need benefits, but in order to get...
Because my sense is it's probably easier to fund van drivers than...
Right.
But just a suggestion.
Yeah. I just think it's, you know, I'm starting my twenty-third year slowly winding down. And, you know, I just, I just feel, and, you know, the board, we had a lengthy board discussion about this, you know, is this the right year to put it in the budget? I think, you know, the fact that, you know, it is a contingent and a non-contingent budget, it is, you know, looking ahead, you know, it would be, it would not be, you know, the right thing to do not to put it out there now. And, you know, we've done our homework, I have all the comparison towns and, you know, just to take a look at it, you know? And truly, it's going to be forty-two thousand dollars plus, you know, whatever the benefits would be. And I just think in order to, you know, get a good person, you need to, it has to be a town slot.
Yep.
And it hasn't been for eighteen years.
Yeah, just to explain too, what that, and David's probably not familiar with it, I know Katie is, but the town's policy is, and probably somewhat rightly so, is if a person like this outreach worker really is a full-time employee of Milton, but part of the salary is funded by a grant, in other words, the salary is charged with a grant, but they still get a double-fee from the town of Milton for working forty hours a week. So they're entitled to insurance and retirement as any other worker would be. The problem is that those expenses are properly chargeable against the grant and our policy is for all, anybody, schools or anybody, anybody that receives a grant to fund part of a person's salary, that that's, you know, the grant also covers that proportional share of their employee benefits, which reduces the amount available to pay per salary with them. So that was the dilemma, that the amount was just enough to pay the salary, then when you burdened it up with the employee benefits, there wasn't enough money, they had to keep her the, those twenty-seven hours, so.
Well, it's been a problem we've been trying to solve for a long time, so I'm glad to see that it's in the contingent budget.
Right.
I think that's a good proposal for this budget scenario this year to address that situation.
And I think it's going to be, you know, people are going to say, "Well, last year you had a full-time van driver." And that's, and that's right, we did get the full-time van driver. And, you know, I can't, I think, you know, we have to look at the department as a whole and just say, "This is the one missing piece. If we can put this together, I think it's just going to move forward and be able to serve more of the residents." And, as you know, you know, I go to all these meetings all over the state and everybody says the same thing, the smart town who tries to keep seniors in their home, you know, they cost the town less truly. And all you have to do is have the services in place for them and, you know, they're not a draw on the schools, they're really not a draw on like Park and Recs, you know, as I think it was Rick Neill who told me, they're your ideal, they're your ideal tenants, so to speak. But, you know, they just love this town, they really do. They support overrides, you know, they're already talking about what's coming down the road and, you know, they love the town, they've worked hard to get it to where it is, they want to stay here and with just, you know, that extra help, I think, you know, you'll have a lot of happy elderly residents.
I agree. I think that they certainly do deserve it and with the ages growing, with our senior population and the need for more programming, so I, you know, I think it's a good idea, but I also charge you to continue to look at further programming for all of our aging seniors because they are, you know, they're on the move and I think it's great.
I didn't want to interrupt you. So a segue, I didn't want to repeat what Mary Ann said far better than I could, but I mean, it's, I've been the chair of the Council on Aging for what, about less than six months? And I, I mean, what goes on up at the senior center is always going to be the core of the activities, but I do feel we have a responsibility to look at seniors and their needs in a wider sense. And one of the things that I've been doing over the last several weeks is looking at the really good language in the master plan about senior housing and related things and aging in place. And so I've been looking at that in that context. And the master plan, I believe, expects the number of seniors in town to approximately double by 2030. Now, related to what we were talking about with the outreach, we've got to start working on that. We can't suddenly get to 2020 and find we haven't done anything to address this surge. And that's another argument for sort of incrementally building up the resources at the senior center. And it's really a very small amount, as I said in another context, I mean, assuming, which is probably not correct, but let's assume for now that a typical senior lives in a typical Milton house, given the sort of override numbers that are being talked about, that's going to be six and seven hundred dollars more in taxes, whereas what we're talking about here is about seven dollars and fifty cents for that house.
Right, right.
So it doesn't, it seems like that's a reasonable, well, it's still a very good deal for the town, not so great for the seniors in terms of money at least. So on that context, but then I was looking at primarily the area of housing and we're already desperately short of housing that seniors can downsize into. The wait lists, depending on, you know, at least five years, if not ten years, at the places you mentioned. If you look at the cohorts, the different age brackets, it's very clear that a lot of seniors have had to move out of town, well, because they couldn't find places that they could downsize into. I looked at the numbers and it seemed to me that by 2030, you know, at least we've got to figure out what we'd like to have, we'd need about a thousand more units in town for seniors to downsize into.
Right, right.
And that's, as Mary Ann already said, those exactly the size of residents you want. I mean, from the town's point of view, if you're on time or have substantial time, they don't take a lot of town services. And also from the family point of view, because so many of my kids with kids, grandkids, both of them work. And, you know, grandparents are a great resource in that circumstance. I'm not saying they should work five days a week, babysitting, but I don't think my wife would go for that. But, and it's a great resource. So with that in mind, I have begun to work on this and I'm going to try and focus on housing. I'm going to, we're working on a, I guess, an outline, I don't know what to call it at this point. I'm going to talk to appropriate people like Bill Clark, other people who don't know about the town and do a bit like Bob Sheffield, the Housing Authority, Fuller, to try and see what we can do. I mean, I think, you know, given the, like the master plan said, there was space of two-hundred-and-sixty more units in Milton, so trying to find a thousand units is probably a, it's a very ambitious goal, let's put it that way. But we should be at least trying to think of how it might be done.
Right.
And, you know, I think I might try and talk to people like Rotary and that kind of thing to just, and obviously trying to get people thinking about it, at least how we, not so that the master plan, to the extent it can become...
Right.
Real. It does become real, it doesn't just sit around.
Yeah. And some of those efforts can be efforts and, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust is thinking about those things too all the time of ways to, and programs that would allow seniors to remain in their house at reduced costs, you know, ways to save them, you know, ways to give them grant money to do home improvements, perhaps ways to, you know, help with real estate taxes and things like that, or ways to get them additional income, you know, like some, you know, the accessory dwelling or, you know, things perhaps, you know, things like that is, there are a lot of programs out there that can work.
Well, there are, but I mean, a lot of, I mean, the other thing that this thing in place in your house, you know, it doesn't, you've still got all the maintenance and stuff which gets, believe me, more and more...
It does, it gets expensive.
Irks them at least, as you grow older.
Yep.
So I don't, I mean, yes, for some people that would be a solution, but it's not a solution.
Not everybody, no.
No, I mean, I think, you know, the waiting lists at Fuller and Home Inc. indicate that a lot of people feel that they need to go somewhere where they have less cares, if you like, compared with their, connected with their house.
Right.
Michael, you mentioned the master plan, there is going to be a master plan implementation committee that has not yet been fully appointed, but that will be looking at how we take the goals that we've come up with in that plan and start implementing some of them on a priority basis or picking off low-hanging fruit first. So I'm not sure how quickly that might rise to the top of the list, but probably something that would...
Well, it's sort of something that you've got to think about how to do it.
Yes.
I mean, and you've got just the sheer availability of land, it goes in with the zoning issues that the planning board has been working on. And then, then how do you do it? And my guess would be some kind of private-public partnership, but that's just a guess at this point, because I don't think the town has the resources to do it. And I don't think it's the sort of thing that I think is needed. They might not find it economically attractive enough to do it without some kind of public input.
Right. And typically that's where community preservation comes in and we unfortunately don't have community preservation.
Yes, I talked to a gentleman who's in charge of the development of the priori site and he said he can't sell a condominium inside 128 for less than a hundred thousand dollars. Admittedly, they're a fairly high-end developer.
Right.
I think your idea to consult with Fuller Village and MRE and others is good.
Yeah, it's good.
Debbie Felton would be very interested in talking with you about some ideas.
So with that in mind, I love PowerPoints when they're not PowerPoints, they're just handouts. I hate talking and doing things with a screen at the same time, so I don't know how many copies we have, but you have a copy, I have a copy, so there should be plenty there.
Thank you.
So, and in that context, I mean, we would like to invite any or all of you to attend one of our meetings. The next one is November nine.
November nine, Monday.
Nine o'clock in the morning, so those of you who work, I know it's tough, but at least you could, we, most of the meetings, all the meetings I've been to, except for one, has been over by ten. And we knew that one was not going to be done by ten, so I would invite you, so thank you.
Thank you for taking a long-range look at this and it's very important and so appreciate that.
So we need to act on the budget, which is a small budget, but it's a lot done for small box, right, Mary Ann? So I'll move that we have proven forward to the Warren Committee, the FY 2017 budget for the Council on Aging, in the amount of three-hundred-and-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars for a contingent budget and two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars for the non-contingent budget.
I'll second that.
Much may I second any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the seniors, thank you. They really, really appreciate this. Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Okay, item nine on the agenda is a discussion with Building Commissioner Joe Prondak, quarterly report and presentation of FY 2017 budget. Hi, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
Hey, Joe.
Oh, well, we're getting through this agenda and it's only eight o'clock, so.
Well, you just finished us.
There you go.
So where are we at with the Building Department?
Well, I think I'll start by saying that the future does look bright. Numbers are looking good and I'll just go quickly into some numbers, which I just prepared today. So in fiscal year fourteen, we took in a total of eight-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars with eleven-hundred-and-seventy-seven building permits issued. In fiscal year fifteen, we took in eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars, slightly less than the previous year, but a slight increase in building permits, twelve-hundred-and-sixteen. This year so far, fiscal year sixteen, we're at almost three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars and five-hundred-and-thirty-eight building permits issued.
And we're not really halfway through the year.
So if you extrapolate that out, if things continue, if the trend continues, we're looking at numbers into nine-hundred-thousand or more, maybe even close to a million, and maybe fifteen-hundred building permits.
Do things slow down in the winter at all or no?
I mean, look at last winter, look at the snow we had and the answer quite frankly was no.
Didn't slow down.
Surprisingly, it did not, because there's so, because there's so much planning and detail involved in the kind of renovation that's prominent in Milton right now with, you know, second levels on houses, complete remodels, tear downs and rebuilds.
Yep.
So there's a lot that goes into it, so, you know, the snow isn't going to deter someone from applying for permit in January.
Yep.
Because it's a, you know, it's a several-week process.
Yep.
So these are record numbers and stands to be even higher this coming year, so I think that's, I think that's a huge plus. So having said that, I would like to just talk briefly and again mention that we did suffer a brief staffing crisis. This is out of our control. That has come to an end, thankfully, but we went almost six months without a full-time clerical staff person. That had a devastating effect. You know, people who apply for building permits are paying significant fees for all those permits and we have to get that work done. What happens is, and we're left with no choices, that we have to and had to, more so than ever this time, suspend a lot of our zoning enforcement actions this year. And so I have a backlog and we're going to start addressing that as soon as I get back from vacation, which starts in about half an hour. I would like to take a minute to publicly thank my staff especially through that crisis for really stepping up to the plate and also some of the other departments that pitched in, the town administrator for putting up with a couple of my mini meltdowns during that crisis. It was a tough, stressful time and it was a challenge, but I think we're on the other side of that and I'm thrilled and grateful for that. So essentially that's where, I think I would add just one more thing and mention one person where we're at. I think I would add just one more thing, and mention one person in particular, and that's our local inspector Jay Bolia, who is just truly a workhorse. I don't know how else to put it. He really, his dedication to the town, his work ethic is just unparalleled, and I think it deserves a strong mention, especially in a position where you're often the subject of high criticism.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just wanted to mention that as well.
Jay's a very dedicated employee.
Yeah, he really is. And I've seen, I've worked with him now for the nine years I've been here, and I'm really very impressed by his performance. And I don't think people say that enough.
How's the, how's the online permitting going?
Well, the online permitting is going. You know, we started, we initiated that in 2009 with somewhat of a basic system, but then we advanced to more capabilities online, the ability to submit plans and to discuss back and forth through the system, through a chat feature within the system, the various goings-on. The biggest problem with the online permitting system is the, the lack of knowledge on the construction industry side of that. So, we spend, our staff spends, a lot of time teaching people how to, how to register, how to apply for permits, how to upload documents.
Yeah. Double change, though, double change.
Joe, you mentioned to me when we met prior that you may hold some informational workshops on that. Is that something
Absolutely, still a goal of mine.
Go ahead.
But when we, you know, when we had the situation like we had
Right. You were obviously put back because of that, but in the future, that's something that you may look towards doing.
I will definitely, I'm
See, I think that'd be very helpful.
On the top of my agenda, absolutely, but, you know, again, the focus has to be first on getting the permits issued in a timely fashion.
Right.
Whatever it takes to get that done, and everything else has to come second.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Who's that software vendor on that?
It's a company called Full Circle Technologies. They're out of Boston. They do us, they do Marshfield, they do Hingham, they do Franklin County. They have a lot of
Sometimes those companies will be willing to do some training, you know, I mean
Well, yeah, I think we could, we could partner with them to do some
And use their training.
David just mentioned.
Maybe a way to, I mean, even if it costs a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's certainly something worth looking into. The other thing, though, with the online permitting is that, and not necessarily to criticize our company, because all the companies are the same. They are technology companies. The building inspection field is a unique field. The building codes are constantly changing, and the staff at the various companies, no matter, and it doesn't matter which vendor you have, the staff at those companies don't understand building codes. So, it's, it's always a challenge to get them to, oftentimes, we find the systems not adequate for a particular function. We have to get them to change or adjust, and, you know, so that's a constant challenge, and I think that will always be there.
Mm-hmm.
But that's kind of a summary of where the online permitting is. Certainly a benefit. You know, we initially spent $30,000 for the system, and we spend about $5,500 to almost $6,000 a year in maintenance fees. It has, you know, certainly, we would have needed more staff to
Yep.
continue doing the paper and pencil thing
Right.
that we do. And the other thing it's helped to do, and I see, it will continue to do that, will be able to reduce the number of file cabinets, literally.
Sure. Is it all cloud storage?
Yeah. And that becomes important as the town grows, and if, you know, there's a need for the department to grow, we also need a place to put staff.
Right.
So, it's important to get that
Are the inspectors using the handhelds for, to do the inspections with?
Not yet. That's a
That's the next step.
That's the next step.
Yeah, good. When do you think you'll be there, any idea?
Um...
Do you get the cost of getting the equipment?
It's a cost issue.
It's a
But I haven't, I haven't really spent the time to look into that yet. I mean, it's on my list, but I haven't got there yet.
Good.
Joe, could you talk about your budget request for this new position?
Yep. So, and that is the big issue with my budget. I've had some discussions with Anne Marie and Tom and others, and in the nine years that I've been here, it's always been with zoning. When times are slow, we're able to, we're able to keep on top of the zoning complaints and all that goes along with that. But when building permit activity is high, that takes a backseat. So, it's always an up and down.
And we've never been proactive with respect to zoning. It's always been reactive.
Exactly. And so, what I envision here is the creation of a full-time zoning enforcement agent, someone that would do the work that my inspectors or myself, that we do now. And with zoning enforcement, for example, unregistered cars, commercial vehicles, businesses run out of houses, illegal apartments, ultimately, you know, reinforced by first sending letters, telling people to stop, and then if they don't, it comes into a court situation, whether that be criminal or civil. But you don't know which ones are going to go that way. So, you have to treat everyone as if it is. So, it's a matter of keeping very detailed, accurate records, reports, much like the police would do on any criminal investigation. So, it takes a certain level of expertise and dedication and to achieve that properly. And if you don't do that, ultimately, we're going to fail in our efforts to maintain some level of property value protection. But we do envision that this position would be lesser classification than a building inspector position. So, the hope would be that it would take some of the burden off of the building inspectors, and I think not right now, but in the future, if there needs to be a reduction in staff, it could be a reduction in the building inspector position, which is a higher level. So, that's my thinking on the creation of this position. I think it's, in the end, it's a prudent strategy.
Plus, it's not a novel idea. I know Randolph has a, has a full-time zoning enforcement.
Yeah, Quinsey created one recently.
You know, what other towns do? Does Canton and
It would allow you to be more efficient than, you know,
Definitely.
in how you're doing business right now, okay?
That's the goal, yes.
More efficient and proactive on some
And proactive on some, okay.
And I like the way you describe it, and you let each other, it's quality-of-life aspect of zoning, because occasionally, we do get a complaint that there's unregistered cars in somebody's yard, and that's, you know, that's an eyesore in a neighborhood.
It's very common.
And that affects property values.
It sure does.
People's comfort level with
Great.
Right.
With their, with their quality of life
And also tends to be linked to crime in neighborhoods, too.
Yes.
So, it's
And it can be, it can be multiple cars on a particular property. It can be, it can be repeat issues. So, it is important. It is, it is a key tool in protecting property values within the town.
Right.
So, that's the real difference between your contingent and non-contingent budget.
That's correct.
Looks like your expenses were steady.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, they haven't changed.
Yep. And the other thing, you know, as David and I discussed several months ago, and there's a lot of opportunity, this new position, if it were passed, this, we are so reactive. There's so many things, so many avenues where we could be proactive, which will lead to a more efficient operation of the department down the road. You know, I think if we can provide some training programs for contractors, for homeowners, I think that's, you know, that will improve our efficiency. I also think that there could be some collaborative effort between my department, some other departments, the Board of Selectmen, and some of the state legislatures. There's been a lot of talk lately about fixing some issues in our own zoning bylaw, but there's also some serious issues that need to be fixed at the state level in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, to be specific, the Zoning Controlling Act, that was essentially written back in the '40s and '50s and somewhat updated in the '70s and not touched since. And we know so much more through all the court cases. Cities and towns in Milton, too, we spent so much time in court due to the ambiguities of the
Of the law.
Of the law, and if we could maybe work on some of that, it's just an investment in the future.
Just one other quick question, Joe. I suspect it's just a breaking up, and FY 16, on your miscellaneous lineup, you had $8,800. That drops $1,500 in FY 17, but then you pick up some new items.
Yes.
Is that just a refinement?
Yes, it was, all of
Pilotage IT expenses?
Were
Lumped into miss.
Lumped into that, because there was no specific account number for them.
Okay.
As there still isn't, but we just broke them out, so it was clear. That question came up with the warrant committee last year.
Yep, okay.
Okay. All right, I'll move to approve and forward to the warrant committee the FY 2017 budget for the Inspection Services Department in the amount of $478,550 for a contingent budget, and $428,229 for a non-contingent budget.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Enjoy your vacation.
And thank you to Jay and the rest of your very good staff for all their efforts.
Is Joe going to stay for the
Sure, for your discussion?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a discussion on the condition of Zero Central Avenue, 131 Elliott. And this is just a short discussion on it. Just give a little bit of background.
Are we taking number 10 and 11 together?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, may as well. But first on 10. At our last court team staff meeting, I suggested that it had been a long time since we've looked at the condition of the Henry building, and it's still standing. It may be standing for a while. We don't know exactly how much longer, through no fault of anybody's at this point. But, you know, it is a concern, because, you know, we just want to know what the condition is. So, I did suggest that maybe Joe, see if he could take a look at the building, see if it's deteriorated any more than the last time that we saw it, and if so, how bad. So, there was some back and forth between the Conleys and the town, but the Conleys have agreed to allow us to come in and inspect the building with a representative from their
Their structural engineer.
Structural engineer, yeah, which I think is perfectly reasonable. But if you want to expand on that at all, Joe?
No, only that, you know, I had initially set that up, but then there was some concern that we do it with their structural engineer, and I absolutely welcome that. I think it'll be, I think it's a good thing.
Yep.
I'll be happy to help coordinate that. I've, since the board delegated me to handle the Henry situation, I'm happy to coordinate that. I've had a lot of communications with Mr. Conley, and they're very willing to work with us, and have been very cooperative throughout the process. So, I'd be happy to help coordinate anything.
And like I said, I think that's a reasonable request from the Conley side, and I think it's helpful to, you know, for both parties to agree on what the condition is. Hopefully, that's what will occur. So, I don't know that there's anything else to say about that.
No, okay. So, I'll make a motion to extend the deadline for the concurrent demolition of the town-owned property at Zero Central Avenue, in the Carrick Realty Trust property at 131 Elliott Street, from October 20, 2015, to November 24, 2015.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, and
And we may not be meeting that night. I think we changed it to the 23rd, but
Well, you could leave it the 24th and meet the 23rd.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll know if you have, so, that's fine. And we are really just kind of waiting to see what happens with the DEP, you know, on that problem.
We are, and the town is also working on our own demolition permit. The Conleys do have a demolition permit, we do not, but we are working with the Conservation Commission on that.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, item 12 on the agenda is discussion approval of composition of Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And are we going to defer this?
I'd like to move that we appoint Matthew Crowley to the, of Longdale Road, to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll second that.
That's fine. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just, I spoke with Matt. He's got, I think, a good background for this committee.
He really does.
He has a lot of expertise in the area of noise.
Sound and noise.
Noise study, I think, would be a good thing to have his
He'd be a great addition to this committee. I think that, you know, a meeting the other night, I thought very well. I think it was very positive, and I think that we're looking for a collaborative effort, and I think that he'd be a fabulous addition to help us move forward.
Yep. He certainly sounds well-qualified, part, so, I agree.
And we've said we may have other changes that we're looking at, but for purposes of tonight, I think this is one that we want to put forward tonight, and obviously, the Board of Health needs to weigh in, and if we vote it tonight, we need to have the Board of Health take a separate vote as well.
As a joint venture.
Subject to the Board of Health approval, absolutely.
Yeah, so the motion is subject to approval by the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, item 13 is the acceptance of Curry College pilot payment.
I'll move to accept a payment in lieu of taxes from Curry College in the amount of $82,238 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Other than, thank you, Curry? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Could you remind me of the future agenda items about pilot?
Sure.
Otherwise, I'll forget. I'm 65. Thoughts don't last long in the head. Okay, item 14 is approval of town, town reports FY 17 budget. This is a pretty simple one.
I'll move that we approve and forward to the warrant committee the FY 17 budget for town reports in the amount of $6,300 for the contingent and non-contingent budgets.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, item 15 is board and committee appointment, Logan Community Advisory Committee representative.
I'll move to reappoint Cindy Christensen of 59 Collmore Street as the Milton representative to the Logan Community Advisory Committee, to serve through October of 2016.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, come to that time. Looking for the town administrator's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the residents of the town for allowing me to have the training, safety training program last Friday at Town Hall. I know
I gave the kickoff speech, yes.
Tom, you were there in the beginning. I wished you were able to stay for the full day training program, because it was phenomenal. Employees today were still talking about this program. I want to thank Jack Richmond, Sergeant Jack Richmond. Richard Wells came over and had a brief opening, had brief opening remarks as well. And then, a company called Synergy Solutions partnered with Sergeant Richmond to conduct the exercise, and it was a real live exercise. We had guns blank, obviously, but going off, and we had set up four training programs in four separate offices. And I can't say enough about how excited I am to see one of my personal goals come to fruition. And we are the second Town Hall to have conducted this type of training program, so I'm very excited about that. Next Town Hall, try to be number one on things, but number two this time. But, you know, we broke, we broke in and did the training ceremony and then, training sessions, and then we came back and had some discussions, follow-up discussions. And as a result of the training, what I've asked departments to do is to go back to their offices with their employees and really talk about their action plan in their office and put protocols together. I know in a real-life situation that you're not going to follow this plan exactly to the letter T, but just to have, to think about what kind of program you would put in place in your office. And then, it also made us think about what kind of things we should have in the office, what kind of safety gear we should have. And so, it just, I can't just say enough about the program, and I really thank you for allowing me to do it. And we rolled it out. I think the library has conducted it, and my hope is to get it to the Council on Aging, and DPW, and Cemetery, and the other off-site locations, because it's, you know, hope to God you never have to really act it out, but it was telling, and the employees were amazing. And a couple of them had panic attacks, but we handled those well. But again, thank you so much.
No, certainly, Town Hall is not immune to violence, just like in the, you know, the office world environment. You know, it can be from a disgruntled boyfriend, disgruntled spouse, it can be from a dissatisfied customer, it can be from anybody.
Exactly.
And you just never, ever know, and it happens with more and more frequency these days. As I said to the group, too, it's, you know, once fear kicks in, just, you know, your mind kind of shuts down, and you don't think logically any longer, so you're acting instinctively. So, you really want that training, you know, everything you've learned to be instinctive.
Absolutely.
That's what you do. that's what you do. And it was evident that when that gun was fired, people's hands started shaking, couldn't open the locks to the doors.
We had four separate trainings, so we broke into four groups, and then, like I said, there were four offices that we used, so we did it four different times. And then, they talked about, you know, it's, when, in the situation, just, if your door is locked, just unlocking that door, trying to get that key in, you know, you don't realize now, but you just can't get the key in the lock. And so, at the end, they broke us up, and they said, okay, everybody go back to their offices. So, we all walked, walking back to our offices, and they shot the guns in the lobby, and people panicked. And one of my employees, we came up, she couldn't, she literally couldn't get, her hand was so shaking, and she, "I can't get the door open, I can't get the door open." And this was a practice drill, so it was so telling just from that little bit. So, again, I just, I'm telling you, it was wonderful.
That's been one of your longtime goals, Anne Marie, so I think it was good that you had that and were able to put it together and organize it and conduct that. That was a good accomplishment.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I think that's great to be so proactive. I think that, you know, just history, recently, at the high school, with the way they reacted to a situation has shown us that when practicing these events, it's going to pay off.
Exactly, yeah, thank you, thanks again. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, at this point, I don't have any report.
I don't either at this point.
I have just two quick things. One is I attended a dedication at the East Congregational Church of their Little Free Library on Saturday, at the invitation of Pastor Shelley, and this is a, it's not a big library, this is, think of a birdcage-sized building with a little, a lot of books in it, and it's a nationwide movement, there's something like 30,000 of these around the country. This is the first one in Milton, so East Church led the way on this for us, but the Park Department is going to be taking a look at it and possibly having a Little Free Library. And the idea is that you can just come, it's located on Granite Place.
Yeah, Crane Field.
Right near Crane Field, but it's on the church property on Granite Place, and it's, you can just walk up to it, take a book, bring a book, and you can return it at any library, any Little Free Library is the name for it, around the country, around the world. So, that was a nice event. And I'm also, I am, as we talked about on Thursday night, and David, you mentioned we had a good meeting with the Airplane Noise Committee. Cindy Christensen and I are working on a draft of the letter regarding her concerns about the Blans study. So, we'll, we've sent it back and forth a few times, the next step is to send it to Town Council, Caris North, to have her take a look at it, and then circulate it to the full board and the Airplane Committee members to review and hopefully collect some comments and finalize it fairly soon. That's all.
Great. Citizen speak responses? I don't really have any, but.
I wanted to ask, not on tonight's, but two weeks ago, we had Lisa Leo come in and talk about Work Inc. on Walcott Road.
Yes.
Have we done any follow-up on that?
Yes, we have, Katie, the Assistant Town Administrator, went out and looked at the property and has had a few follow-up conversations with Ms. Leo, yes.
Okay, great.
So, we are working on that.
Good, thank you.
Good. Future agenda items, the only thing I wanted to add was that we put on a future agenda the pilot program again to just kind of carry to the next step, see how we're going to implement it.
Yeah, and on that, I've actually spoken with both Jim Henderson and Bill Bennett separately, and we're going to be moving forward, and I'd like to catch up with Brian Cronin as well, but moving forward on looking at potentially holding a lunch with, you know, Curry, Milton Academy, and Milton Hospital, that's kind of the big three, and sitting down and articulating kind of what our thoughts are and kind of getting an assessment from them on what they're currently doing and putting a value on some of the things that they do, and looking at opportunities where we can work together for many years and create some sort of, you know, a program that can help the town.
Yep, yep, that's good. You know, but even over and above that, just in terms of ongoing, because it is a little bit of a complex program in terms of trying to measure the services you're giving compared to the cash you're giving, and.
You have to put a dollar value on some of the programming and some of the assets, whether it be facilities.
Right, and kind of analyzing that every year.
But it's really a true partnership, and it does, obviously, that can change yearly.
Sure, yeah.
But I think that, you know, if we go in this, and I think that, you know, I think everybody would want to, you know, try to find a reasonable way to operate and show a lot of respect for each other and try to find ways to, you know, to ultimately, you know, show them that we care about this, and that they also should get, they should be rewarded for what they do as well.
Right, right.
Sounds like Dave's willing to step up and volunteer to take on pilots, so I think on a future agenda, we delegate it to David Burns. What about the Yule and Rank, Tom, is that something we can put on an agenda sometime soon for an update?
Yes, what I know about it this point, because I've been staying clear of, you know, I'm not on that committee, actually, David is, but one of the things they wanted to do was a physical needs assessment, and they did get a proposal.
Request for proposal, it will be on your.
And we're meeting tomorrow night.
Yes, and it'll be on your October 26th.
As a committee.
And we still have not seen anything from the state in terms of an RFQ, or an RF.
No.
So, we're still awaiting that, we had thought it would have been here by now, but that may be another reach, reach out to the state to see what's holding it up.
And OPEB, I know that's coming up on a future agenda.
Yes.
The treasurer and Town Council are working on the trust agreement.
Yeah, I talked to Jim McGolden yesterday, and he said that that had been done, the incorporation of mine and your changes into one document. I haven't seen it yet, but.
And the budget, are we shooting for early November on the budget and, I mean, the five-year financial plan?
Yes, the five-year financial forecast will be on the third agenda, and I will be sending out the invitations to chairs of committees to let them know that that presentation will happen.
And the contingent, non-contingent budget shortly thereafter.
Shortly thereafter.
And both of those are going to need, especially that contingent, non-contingent is going to roll out, and most likely, the results are going to be, because we're going to have to have a meeting at some point in time on what kind of an override number can we live with as selectmen, and are we willing to put on a, you know, on a ballot? Because I suspect the initial number is going to be more than we're willing to, you know, risk. And it's risking two points, it's risk number one from the standpoint that if it's too big, you risk it not passing, and you're better getting something than nothing. You know, so that's.
But we'll have the financial forecast first.
Financial forecast first, then the contingent, non-contingent budget.
That sounds good.
Okay, so I'm going to stand a motion to adjourn, and adjourn, and then open a meeting of trustees of Governor Stoughton Fund.
So moved.
And seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, I'll call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and the first order of business is approval of Milton Community Food Pantry, Inc. request for donation.
I'll make a motion to approve a request for the Milton Community Food Pantry Incorporated in the amount of $15,000 to support its dairy voucher program that allows client families to purchase milk and eggs at the Milton Food Mart.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and is this, is consistent with donations that we made in the past?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, all right, and we still have something in the high $300,000s in the town?
Yeah, about, I would say about 325 now.
Okay, okay, so this will bring it down close to 300, but worthy cause. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.